I've written emails in the past, and I also spoke at the last meeting on January 10. I want to reiterate that I fully support the Gates Mills Boulevard Trail Project and would like to see this move forward. I have witnessed an overwhelming amount of support from residents who live on Gates Mills Boulevard, as well as from residents who live on streets connected to Gates Mills Boulevard. I've spoken to more than half of the residents on my own street, Kingswood Drive, and all are in support of this project. Most of those individuals have either written an email, and some of them are present here tonight. I know there are some who oppose this project, and that's to be expected. Rarely is there a unanimous vote on anything. What I want you to focus on is the majority of the residents in this area want this trail, and when you vote on something, you win that vote based on the majority. Each member of council should be representing the people and what the people want, and in this case, the people want the trail. I know some of you are waiting on questions or specifics to be answered concerning this trail, for example, cost and funding, safety, design, et cetera. At this point, what you are voting on is whether or not the city should spend money for additional engineering and design of the trail itself. If you ask me, the answer to that should be yes. Since the original plan and design was not what the residents wanted, and you listened to us before on that, so thank you, the city now has to go back to the drawing board to develop a better concept and plan. This costs money, and it's what's needed to give the residents a great trail that will further beautify the city. The new pool and aquatic center project has gone through many phases, and like that, this is just another relevant phase that the trail must go through. No one shut down the pool and aquatic center project because there were some unanswered questions. Those have and continue to be answered as the project emerges. Please do not shut down this trail project because some of your questions have not fully been answered. They will all be in due time, so please vote yes on this next step so that we can move forward on the trail project. Once again, the residents are speaking out and telling you that they want this trail, so please do what's necessary to keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Meek. Karen O'Donnell?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, council members, and guests, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I've lived in this community my whole life. Lander Road, Commonwealth, I had to write them down, Genesee, Chatham Way, Parker Drive, and for the last 35 years, I've lived on Long Ridge Road. Not to mention, my family business has always, when while it was active, always been in Mayfield Heights. We wouldn't have had it any other place. My family and I truly love Mayfield Heights. I think that's obvious. But I'm here to speak against the proposed trail. I live off of Gates Mills Boulevard on Long Ridge. I chose to live there because of the privacy, because of the neighborhood, the warmth of being a part of that neighborhood. My neighbors walk. My neighbors talk. They meet each other, they walk with each other, they meet up at a certain time. I mean, it's not like they have to go to the Boulevard to walk. And I can tell you, my neighbors don't walk on the street, in the sidewalk, they walk on the street. It's just the way it is. My concerns for the Boulevard Trail is safety first and foremost, because living off of the Boulevard, I do see many speeders. I mean, those people just zip around, they try to pass you. You know, if you're getting ready to turn onto Long Ridge and somebody is behind you, they skirt around you as though you were in their way. And I don't know what kind of traffic studies have been done, but I can tell you from living there, it's not safe. And if somebody was trying to cross the crosswalk and one of those drivers was distracted or decided to skirt around me, what if there was a child there in that crosswalk? So it's very concerning to me, not so much as the future. The future of this path or trail is really what concerns me the most. What are we gonna, when are the lights gonna go in? When are the trash cans gonna go in? When are the park benches? As well as many of the major concerns that others have had here tonight, well, okay, so what about someone hanging out on those park benches in the middle of the night? Where are these people gonna park? These 241 people per day that are gonna use this path, where are they gonna park on my I chose to live on Long Ridge because of the neighborhood, not because, not so that it could become a parking place for anybody else. I apologize for the way I'm talking, but I had a head injury, and this is the first time I'm out and about, but I did not want to miss the opportunity to be here tonight. I am in opposition of the motion, whatever the motion's gonna be, I don't even know what the motion is, but that's not for me, I guess, because I'm an audience member. Also, one more thing, I am a Realtor. I don't see that stoplights and flashing lights are going to improve the value of my home. I've been a Realtor for 38 years, and I can tell you, most people, if I was gonna put something on the listing, I don't know who said that, it would be quiet, beautiful neighborhood. So, I do want to say thank you for allowing me to speak today, and it's good to see you all, and I wish you all a very happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Hello, my name is Megan Janisak. I'm a resident at 6354 Eastendale, so I'm one of the many Eastendale people that seem to have emailed in, but I'm here tonight. This is also my first time being here as well, so thank you for doing this. It's kind of an eye-opening experience. I was not necessarily prepared to speak, so this is kind of, I'm gonna just kind of have to speak off the cuff here, but I am in support of the path. I have a five-year-old daughter, I have a one-year-old son. I have been living on Eastendale since 2016. When we first came, I remember we went to the home days, this is obviously before the pandemic, and I remember going up, there were many tables regarding everything that's kind of been moving forward with the pools and the city and all of these things, and I remember filling out all of these applications and the questionnaires. So for everyone that's saying that they have no idea, they've never been surveyed, I've been there since 2016, and now I know I don't live on Gates Mills, but I have been aware of the surveys and the questionnaires and all of those things, so I do know that those have been going on. But with my daughter, she rides her bike. She was an early bike rider, she started riding when she was two, and we've been stuck going in the same loop. And as a child, I grew up in Lynnhurst, and we rode our bike everywhere. I rode with my older sister, my older brother, my parents, and I, we could ride to the pool. And hearing about the connection and being able to connect to the pool is huge to me. I want to take the opportunity to get to ride with her on that trail, teach her how to cross the street safely. I think that we are focusing here, I have people who come speeding down my street as well. People come flying down Eastendale going 45 miles an hour, absolutely, and I think that as a parent, it's important and it's imperative that I teach her how to cross the street safely and how we can do it together as a family, and it can become a family affair, and we can continue utilizing all that Mayfield Heights has to offer us. And as far as the regards with everything with Pepper Pike has not approved or any of those things, I challenge us to be leaders and not to continue to wait for other people to make moves happen. I think Mayfield Heights is a progressive city, and we want to continue to entice people to come here. To me, this would improve the listing of my home. I would list this, that would be one of the first things I would do if I was listing my home. I plan on staying in my home forever, so this is, although I've only been there since 2016, we are not moving, we're staying. So we will be here for the long haul, and we will use this path, and I just, I continue, I urge you to be leaders and not to live in the fears and the what-ifs, but to continue pressing forward, continue asking the hard questions, do the research, and let's make some things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Greg Gathy. Greg Gathy.
Hello, I'm Kathy Talban, and I live at 6470 Gates Mills Boulevard for the last 18 years. Mayfield Heights residents have been speaking for and against this trail for the last two months, which is the first time we knew about it. Those in favor of the trail want another place to walk, I get that, but the residents who are against it have cited safety, maintenance, which is a big one for me, the involvement of residents, even even bigger one for me, ADA compliance, incorrect information being shared about the trail, and the unknown costs. Even the design and engineering proposal has a disclaimer due to COVID, and it states, "This health emergency has the potential to impact multiple facets of the project, without limitation on neighbor, personnel, labor, personnel, manufacturing, equipment, materials, transportation, related supply chain, all of which have the potential to adversely impact the critical path of the project's schedule." After all, we're still in a pandemic, and we're also in inflationary time, and that scares me also with costs. So, let's review how we got here today, so that everyone is really on the same page. On January 27, 2020, Mayfield Heights City passed an emergency resolution to pursue a grant for a trail, and within one month, the Director of Recreation signed the application. Emergency resolutions are needed for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety of the city and its residents. Does submitting a grant to make a deadline meet the criteria of an emergency? No. Emergency resolutions also dispense with second and third ratings, so homework could not be done by the city. Emergency resolutions affect residents' rights because it does not allow them to provide input and bring up concerns to help govern the city where they live. In fact, the residents were not even notified that you would be voting on a resolution for that trail grant two years ago. The city did not do this when they were going to go for a second grant, the park grant. So there are two grants, a trail grant and a park grant, and people keep getting confused about the difference between the two. So the second grant, the park grant, was going to add restrooms, pavilions, a playground, and parking lot to a median. The city actually did send residents a letter informing us that the city would be discussing the park grant at the November 9, 2020 city council meeting, a year ago. Residents spoke, and it was clear they did not want to see restrooms and parking lots in their front yards. City council voted not to move forward with that second grant. Thank you, thank you, thank you. At no time were the residents informed that the city had submitted for the first grant, the trail grant. Also, neither the residents or the city council realized that the parking lot was actually in the trail grant and not the park grant. Residents first learned of the trail grant 22 months after the grant was submitted. When residents arrived at the trails meeting two months ago, the mayor announced he would be taking out the parking lot and other amenities, including the garbage cans. Did he ask for input on any of that? No, because everything had already been decided without us. The second grant allowed input, but not the first one. So, where are we now? It'll be two years since the grant application was submitted. Has a traffic study been conducted? No. Has a study on the impact of the home values been done? Nope. Also, according to the funder's website, you must maintain the trail for a minimum of 15 years, and there are consequences if you do not. Maintenance, a huge one. Has the city demonstrated that it maintains its assets very well? No. Included in the connectivity study, it clearly stated that sidewalks have been impacted by deferred maintenance, which means they are not being maintained. Residents that spoke at the December city council meeting share their stories about items that the city has not maintained or have not followed up on. We've heard several times how a resident in the neighborhood picks up the garbage on the Boulevard because the city does not. Also, the plans for newer projects don't end up looking like the original plan. Marcell Road Bridge is one of them, and we've learned about all the trash that's accumulating there. Does the city have a budget for maintenance of the trail or identify the impact that will have on the city budget? Nope. ADA compliance. When Mr. Ward called the residents that live on the Boulevard to see if they were against it or for it, did he ask if there was anyone in the household that would need access due to a disability? Nope. So this is still an unknown, and I'm glad the resident on Kingswood was here, because originally, there was no consideration to the fact that we had somebody with a wheelchair on Kingswood, and there was nothing, it was just recently something added to Kingswood. It was never on the original drawing. So you don't know who really needs to have access. What if we have a new RUDS that moves in? What's your responsibility to providing them access? Do you even know the answer to that question? Cost. As I pointed out at the last city council meeting, Mayfield Heights only requested 62.5% reimbursement, making your share cost 37.5. The updated budget that was sent to ODNR just this Wednesday...
I have to interrupt and get a motion for you to continue. Move by Mr. DeJohn, second by Mr. Mano. Okay, continue.
The updated budget that was sent to ODNR just this past Wednesday shows the funder's portion at 63.9, not 62.5, and the city's portion is 36.1, not 37.5. I would have expected those totals to be correct like the first budget. Whoever did the budget update is not paying attention to these details. The budget on the new pool and the community center has gone from 17 million to 22 million. What does that mean for the trail budget? So what should you do now? You should vote no. You should vote no in spending the city's money on engineering drawings and in fact, propose a motion to withdraw from this grant. Do not waste any more of the funder's time. If you move forward, they need to do a site visit, and they know that. City funds could better be used for maintenance projects that would better connect the city. Show residents that you care about maintaining the city and not just spending funds on new projects. It takes courage and integrity to change your mind and say no to something you may have supported in the past. But it also shows that when you get new information and you assess the current situation, you are willing to do what's right and be a good steward of the city's funds. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Talban. Just fill out a form and bring it up to me so I have your name for the rec. So no Jules Balkin, Lou Lucarelli's passing.
Hi, I'm Carmella Waterby. It's pronounced 6391 Wood, it's okay, Woodhawk Drive. My husband had wrote a letter earlier, and just so you know, I'm very concerned about that article that was on Cleveland.com. It really bothered me, and a couple people hit on it, and the area, it's, and I quote, it says, "It's possible that deep down, what really concerns residents is whether outsiders using the trail would disturb the peace in a minority, white, eastern Cuyahoga County suburb. That could mean fear of minorities and crime." That is utter BS, okay? My neighbors across the street are black, the ones next to me are from South Korea, the ones two houses down from me are Russia. I go to Walmart every single day, almost every single day, and I've never been served or managed by Norwegian, Swedes, Dutch, or anybody of that ethnicity in Mayfield. So when you put that kind of picture on our community and make it like we're not diverse, not you personally, I'm really angry, and nobody says something about it, I hope the city council writes back to this article and says, "We are not that type of people. We are people that embrace all colors, all ethnicities, and all religions." My husband's Puerto Rican, okay? Hello. He's a minority, and we lived here since 1998, okay? And I just want to let you know, I do oppose strongly that median, not because it affects, it does affect me, but it doesn't indirectly affect me because I don't live on Gates Mills. It's beautiful the way it is. It's nice, and I would hate for me to, if I lived in their homes on Gates Mills, to have to see that. But I do have friends that live on Gates Mills up further across by Knollwood area, and the traffic and everything that goes by there and stuff, we have enough. I live on Woodhawk, okay? I have seen every dog. You talk about minorities, I've seen every dog and everybody walking. Woodhawk Drive is basically the park in Mayfield Heights. It's a walking, you want to see walkers, you can, I invite any one of you to come sit on my porch for one hour on my porch and watch how many walkers. I live in front of a residence of all that Woodhawk community, condos or whatever, there's walkers galore, okay? We don't need that little area to walk. We have a park right across the street. If people are so wanting to walk with their kids and they're so, oh, I'm so healthy, we have a park system. Hello, go to the park. We have a park, it's called the Metropolitan Park, it's right off of, you know, Som, you just go, keep on going down there, you can get to it, it's wonderful. We have wonderful park systems. This is ridiculous. Please recant that article. That's what I'm asking you. We are not racist. I'm white, okay? And I'm not a racist, okay? We are not a racist community. Please, somebody speak up against that article. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmella.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Maureen Reich, 6528 Long Ridge Road. I've spoken at the last few council meetings, I've sent emails, I've called several council members. So I'm not going to reiterate the things that I've already said. I'm pro-trail, have been, since we moved into our house 24, almost 24 years ago. But what I would like to say is, while I was sitting in the front row all evening, I was looking at the logo on the floor and the year of incorporation, 1950. It happened to be the year that my husband was born, and he was born right here in Mayfield Heights and lived, has lived in Mayfield Heights almost his entire life. As a matter of fact, the house that we live in now is the house that his parents built on Long Ridge Road, and we moved back after three other families had lived there. We took the house back. We love our neighbors. We've got several of our neighbors here tonight, too. It's a wonderful neighborhood, it is a walking neighborhood, and this trail will add an additional walking area that will benefit all of us. So a little story about my husband living here, his parents were the concessionaires for the original pool. So his very first day of work ever was selling cotton candy and concessions on the opening day of the original pool here in Mayfield Heights. So I thought, this is, we've come full circle, and I know there've been a lot of very negative people, and there's a lot of anger from some people. I don't really understand how much anger there is about a small, little trail, but what I do know is that in 1950, there were leaders who saw a vision of the city that was about community and having amenities that were good for families. Now, many of those people who were here in 1950 are gone, but there are new, there's a new resurgence of young families in this city. I'm so proud of the council for moving forward with a new pool, a new park, new recreation amenities, and I ask you to be the leaders of today, the leaders of the 20, of this century, of the 21st, the 21st century, and revitalize Mayfield Heights, beautify Mayfield Heights. Do the job of fixing the garden area in the middle of Mayfield Road, you know, don't fall back and leave those things unmaintained. Create a gateway, get a gateway into the center of Mayfield Heights, and include this trail as part of it. I think you can find it in yourselves that you can do this. I think you can move past all of the nitty-gritty little tiny numbers and all of those things that will cause you to say no, and you can collaborate and make it happen. And so I thank you, and I hope that you will approve the trail tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Maureen.
Hi, I'm Ashley Moses, 6521 Long Ridge Road. I've also spoken at several of the other meetings, so you all know how I feel that I am for the trail. We've lived there for 13 years, and I remember one of the first times I ever met our mayor, the first thing I asked him was, "How do we get a path down Gates Mills Boulevard?" My family would love it, I had just had a little girl, and we're very active. So I have been wanting this for almost a decade now, and I agree with a lot of the other people that are in support of this. We look to you to be our voice and to listen to what the majority of the residents want, not what you want, so I really hope that you truly listen. I'm sure all of your answers will come once we get the survey or the drawings done. They probably need those. So I mean, I just, this would be so good for our community. I'm also excited that you are putting in a new pool and community center, and I just echo the voices of everyone else. Be leaders, don't be followers. We got to keep our city current, we have a lot of young families, so, thank you.
Did you have your form ready and back? Thank you, just so I can address you. There are more? Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, hold on one second. Okay, Alexis Steel?
Hello, everybody. I'm gonna have to make this quick because my child is at home alone. So my name is Alexis Steel. Most of you by know now me, know me by now. You all know my stance on the trails, and at this point, at the last meeting, I asked some questions for you all to think about, and I hope you did so. The pros completely outweigh the cons on this issue. The residents of our city will be greatly benefited by this trail. The residents on Gates Mills Boulevard do not own the median, and we all pay the same tax percentages. Our votes that put you in those seats all carry the same weight. Our votes that put you in those seats all carry the same weight. Do what is right and vote yes tonight. Because that is what the majority of voters want. Even a majority of the residents of Gates Mills Boulevard. Those that think it is a trail to nowhere can choose not to use the trail. Those that are so concerned about safety, don't use it or enroll in Safety Town while the rest of us look both ways. But killing the project for the rest of us because of those few goes against why you were voted into your seat. Neither myself nor anyone I have talked to intend to drive to the trail as a destination. I honestly do not understand at this point why we still have to be begging council to better our community. Your job is to represent the wants and needs of the voters in the city. If you do not want to fulfill your duties, then in the future, we need to elect members that will. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Oh, Alexis, can you just state your address and name? Sorry.
Six-five-oh-seven Marshall Road.
Thank you. Jacula Presti?
Thank you, Council, for allowing us all to speak. Jacula Presti, twelve-fifty-nine Bonnie Lane. I wanted to say that I am for the Gates Mills Boulevard Trail. I wrote down three points I'd like to make. I think that the Greenway Trail will socialize the neighborhood. It'll promote exercise and as well as safety, even though I've heard that it won't. I wanted to bring up a point of the Bruce Rinker's Mayfield Village Greenway Corridor. That is very successful. I ride it all the time. I see happy people on that trail. I mean, you could ride to the library, you could ride underneath the tunnels, you can go to the metro parks, you can go take a swim at the Mayfield Village Pool. I just think it is such an awesome thing that was done for the city and it's really benefited them. There is also a quote that was posted on Facebook by Bruce Rinker saying, "A well-maintained park and trail system can be measured objectively to show that it's healthier and property values go up the closer you live to a well-maintained trail or park." His words. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, the pandemic has gotten people more active, so we should definitely cater to that. The bike shops, they can't keep bikes on the floor. They're constantly selling out. You have to put a deposit down to get a bike now because people want to be active. Another point I want to make is residents and families. This is really going to help them out. It's going to give them a place to walk. They need a trail to be able to, and like, you could walk, but I mean, try taking a stroller like across the lawn. You got to walk, you can walk across the street and utilize the path. I mean, if I was a mom, I wouldn't want to throw my stroller in there and go to the metro parks. I want to have something close by. I mean, that would be a huge benefit. People that maybe work around the area, they could use the path to get to where they want to be by riding a bike or walking or what have you. Great social distance activity. You can meet up with your neighbors and talk to them and be outside. I think that's a great benefit. You could use it all year long. And there's been research saying that it's not going to cause crime. It's actually going to be the opposite. I think what causes crime is actually boredom. Let's give people something to do. And I know from like other areas like Beechwood and Shaker and Mayfield Village, like these trails are helping them out. Like I, there are no crimes. And in that letter that was read earlier by Mayor DeSico, it even said that there is no concern of safety at all. And the only safety concern was by a school, I believe. So in closing, again, I'm still for this project and I hope you do say yes to this. And again, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Jackie. Dwight Sa- Safer? Skolfer, sorry.
Good evening, I'm Dwight Stoffer. I'm at sixty-three-sixty-two Woodhawk. I feel blessed by the sidewalk on my street. And that gives me part of my walking exercise. But I'd like to be able to continue along Gates Mills Boulevard and that trail. I, I, I hope you put that in. That's a fantastic improvement. Those who are arguing against it, it sounds like they're arguing against having sidewalks. I, I don't understand that. We, this, this will just be a positive improvement to the city and I hope you vote for it.
Thank you, Dwight. Denise, and I don't want to... Lansla, thank you. Thank you. Lansla, yeah.
Hi, everybody. It's a great city. But I'm from Gates Mills and I live on Saum Center. And this would directly affect us again. But I want to go over the history of what I see. And, you know, these poor people, they do complain about the boulevards. And it is crazy drivers and it's just completely crazy. But just picture five times...
Denise, can you talk into your mic so we can hear you? Thank you.
I'm getting the traffic for all five of those streets coming into me. And when I moved there seventeen years ago, it was just like where the country met the city. And so many things has happened that is so unfair. First of all, I got a letter when Hillcrest was starting their project. And they said that they were going to put the buses in front of Hillcrest. And they said that they would be staying there by Walmart for six months. They sent us a letter. Those buses have been there for years now. And they're right in front of the seventh worst intersection. Now, this is what someone told me. Seventh worst intersection in the United States. So I'm telling you, and it's got the shortest light. People are on their phones. Sometimes you get two cars through, sometimes you get ten. We all just honk our horn just to get people to, to look up. So I tell you, it's a miserable intersection and anybody's gone through it, cannot deny that. But meanwhile, you've got a hundred fifty to two hundred people that work at Hillcrest coming off and on that bus a day with no crosswalk. I've called many times, all my neighbors have called. Someone's going to get killed, we say. If someone hasn't already, we don't know. And no one addresses the wor- I mean, if that isn't the worst safety thing that is, why isn't Hillcrest have it? That's for Hillcrest. Then we get these empty buses that are rooted in our streets, day and a day. You call RTA and they say it's Hillcrest. They could have had it on their property. So it's just a real problem. You guys don't want to get involved with it. And Gates Mills always stays out of everything. Okay, that's number one. So nobody's addressing that. And you say that you're into that. Nothing could be worse than that. Okay, another thing is the flooding. The flooding is, do you know that graveyard, that Acacia graveyard has a wall this high? Water comes over that graveyard wall. It comes over it from, from Woodhawk and everything that is flooding that way. That's a big hill coming down that. We get flooded. Every time it has a hard rain, the sewers fail. And we pay high sewer bills, too. Forty years. And it isn't Gates Mills problems, it's your problems. All around the circle and all the ends of those five streets flood. And nobody's doing nothing about it. Now, that's a bad track record. But then those apartments, I got to give you credit. Those apartments came in that were Section Eight. Greedy apartment owners took the high rental apartments. And they got guaranteed from the government rents, no matter how they ripped those places up. And those people pay three, four hundred dollars a month. And they get twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollar apartments. And what do you think they're going to do? They're going to tear it up. They never had to maintain anything. They're coming, you know, just don't have the wear means. Not all of them. Some of them appreciate being there. But when you walk past there, if you guys are all walkers, you got to know. Needles all over the place, garbage everywhere. And when that turns Section Eight, you come off that, you come off that freeway, there was so much garbage, it looked like Lee Road. And they finally, they got finally some people to come. The prisoners came and cleaned them up a few times. And you've kept up with that nice. I know that's a, I know that's a big job there, cleaning up that. Because these people do not throw their, their garbage in a, in a garbage can. Go to Walmart. All their garbage from their cars out in their parking lots. And that's another thing. Walmart is a real problem. And it's a problem everywhere in the United States. And it's a crime problem. If you look at the crime map, they're solid red across the United States wherever Walmart is because it's so transient.
Denise, do you want to continue? You're at five minutes.
Yes, I do. I'm not too much longer. So I keep going into Walmart and every time they get a new, a manager, I tell them, "We live here. Why can't you clean this up?" And they do. They clean it up beautiful. When I go back in there, I follow up on them and it's beautiful. They wax their floors. I mean, lately, it's just been gorgeous. And the parking lots, you know, they have somebody out there cleaning the parking lot. But then they get a new manager and it, it looks like a war zone again. So I'm telling you that the track record is not good. I'm sure that somebody's tried. Oh, another thing is they tore up our parks. Tore up our parks and you know it, every single light. When that happened, every light in that park, because I go in that park to walk my dog. Everything was tore up. They tore up everything you could tear up in that park that they're going to make something special. Because, you know, it's just, just the way it is. We want people to rise up, but they, they, it was, it's been bad over there. And, and how many people have got hurt? There's so much crime by that bridge because that's where that apartment comes out. And Parker, oh God, they're coming out that, that gate in Parker's. Anybody go see? It's just, we're having problems. I'm just telling you, we're having problems. And I know you guys have really addressed some major things. I have to give you credit. Your park people are fantastic. The police, police have been through a lot and they're great, too. I mean, to have a Walmart and have all this, these apartments, Section Eight, this is not an easy thing for a city. And, and then you have, you know, people who've lived there for long periods of time. It's a problem. But what's going to happen with this walkway? I mean, what's going to happen? You know, how much are you going to promise us like that buses going through? Every time I see a bus, I just, oh. We didn't even have those. So I don't know. I just hope you keep your promises. I understand all these people wanting a walkway. And, and young people with little kids, I understand that. But are they going to keep their promises? And those poor people on Gates Mills Boulevard going to lose that, that city, city? It's, it's not city now, but it will be city. Right now, it's, it's a little bit of the country out there. That's why they moved out there, to kind of be in the country. So anyhow, I'm talking real. I'm sure people will get offended about whatever I said. But it's going to be really unfair for a lot of people and dangerous.
Thank you, Denise. Tommy Walkhouse?
Good evening. I'll keep this quick as my child needs to get to bed as well. My name is Tommy Walkhouse. I live at one-one-five-zero Wharton Boulevard. So, yep. I represent myself and a group of four other cyclists who I go riding with. Right now, we tend to use the services from Mayfield Village. Going down there, Greenway, when I take my daughter to the pool, I go to Mayfield Village because they have better services and facilities. I like that we're building the new dragon pool and we're going to have better stuff there. I'd like to see that in all aspects of our park system. And I think that this Greenway is a potential for that to happen. We can connect more to the other metro parks in the area. And that'll give us honestly a better riding experience. I like going down through Gates Mills. It's beautiful, lots of hills. It's challenging. But coming back to my house is harder. So if I could go up Gates Mills, that would extend my ride and make it safer. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Jeannie Perianos? Perianos?
My name is Jeannie Perianos. I live at six-four-two-five Ferryville Road. I don't oppose trails. I love walking the metro trails. However, I do oppose this trail. I walk every day in my neighborhood. I met Maureen, Ashley. I know all my neighbors. I know all the dogs, all my neighbors. I know all the houses. I know all the ditches. I know Nino. I walk every day, morning, night. I feel so safe in my neighborhood that I walk late at night. You'll see, police will see me walking at eleven o'clock at night. But I do oppose this. I see so many scary things on the neighborhood, in the, on the Boulevard, every day. I don't walk to Frank's house anymore because, up to the corner, I'm going to say, because I'm scared that a car's going to hit me when they turn down Longridge. And that's how I feel about it. I've walked down to some circle, I've walked to Knollwood. I've walked to the neighborhood on Pepper Pike. I walk everywhere. But I really don't walk down the median. It's, it's, I don't like the cars like beeping at me. I don't know. But I hope you guys, thank you for letting me speak. And please consider voting no for the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Andy Teller?
Hello, everyone. Great to be in front of you again. Nino, congratulations, by the way. Andy Teller, twelve-fifty-eight Geese Drive. I'll state right now, I am for the trail. I was raised in this community. I bought a house in this community. Raised my kids and both my kids bought homes in this community. My entire family volunteers and works for the city. And there's some great people in this city. I just think some of the things I hear about when people say things about the mayor and about Sean, that upsets me because I know them personally and I think they do great work. Growing up here, I always remember riding my bike to Mayland Lanes, Eastgate Coliseum, Giant Slide, the Roller Rink. I can go on. I think that's kind of what we're missing right now. I just think that the path would be, again, somewhere to go, somewhere the kids will ride their bikes. Just, just get out when we were kids. So that's all I really have to say. I just say vote for it and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Tim Tolliver?
Hi, I'm Tim Tolliver, two-four-four-six Cedarwood Road. I'm generally pro-trail. And I kind of want to touch on the safety concerns coming from the anti-trail group because I think that they don't entirely hold. So I think there's two main concerns. The first is fast cars. And to that, I'd say, first of all, if people want to walk, then they're going to walk. And so right now, they're walking just on the side of the road. That's a hundred percent of their walk on Gates Mills Boulevard. If they were to instead just cross the road, that's like five percent on Gates Mills Boulevard and the rest is perfectly... and the rest is perfectly safe in the median. But also, I'd say that I think we can instead multitask. I think, like, from what a lot of people have said, we may be overdue for stricter traffic enforcement, so people don't feel unsafe right now. And I don't think we should, you know, give up to the speeding cars and say we can't have a trail because of that, but rather, I think we should try to tackle both issues at the same time. Second, uh, the other safety concern is about like people loitering, people coming from other neighborhoods. And I guess I have three more things to that. So first of all, if it truly is a trail to nowhere, I think people have to go severely out of their way to come and loiter and sit on the benches at twelve AM. And I don't think that they're just gonna want to do that. And I mean, I'm a teenager, like, I'm the menace that would come and sit on the bench and I, I have better things to do than that. I don't, I don't think I'd want to and I don't see why anybody else would. But also, somebody else mentioned that there's gonna be like more eyes and ears on the trail, uh, more attention on it. And so I think it could be safer just because of that. And so overall, I think it would be a safer area and, um, I think it'd bring the community together and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I just wanna make sure that there's nobody else out there that wants to speak before we close the public portion. We, oh, we do have, um, Sean, would you like to speak? Sure. We have two letters that needed to be read. I guess Mr. Leona had said, given them to me and then I have them in front of you. So we can read those, probably read those now before Sean. Yeah, sorry, Sean.
Sorry, Sean. So here is one letter. Dear Mayfield Heights City Council, I am one of the residents who lives in the immediate vicinity of Gates Mills Boulevard, who does not want the trail. The land between the Boulevard is not a park. It is a very narrow median strip of land that would serve as an unrealistic, unsafe park as it exists at the center of a very busy road that runs between a large intersection and a busy roundabout. The trail's inconvenient location will also set the precedent for more to come. Pren, parking lots, flashing beacons, lights, trash cans, kiosks, et cetera, close pren. The only way to guarantee that trash cans and the like do not pop up around my neighborhood is to stop the trail from being implemented altogether. Please note that while you may be receiving messages from residents in favor of the trail, many of them do not live anywhere near or on Gates Mills Boulevard. It's easy one for one to be in favor of something that has no effect on them. Please do not add more foot track, more foot traffic, loitering and concrete to my immediate surroundings. Please represent the residents of Mayfield Heights in voting against this trail project. Thank you. Alana Mestrangeolo, six four six one Longridge Road. There's, I, I do have one more, but it doesn't have, I don't believe it has a name on it. Shall I read it anyway? It's at the end? Okay, perfect, okay.
Thank you.
So it is a little lengthy, so. It is time to vote on whether or not to proceed with the Gates Mills Boulevard Trail. There is no doubt that this project was ill-conceived and poorly presented to the residents. The initial concept was flawed in that it was designed to create a park with a trail in the Gates Mills Boulevard median. Since bicycles and dogs are prohibited by city ordinance in Mayfield Heights City Parks, the value of adding the park slash trail would have been almost negligible. The residents who now are able to walk their dogs in the median would actually have lost that option and those that wanted to bicycle out of town wouldn't have been able, allowed to use the trail. Great plan. As each council meeting where the trail project is discussed progresses, it becomes more and more evident that there is a serious communication gap between city council and the Parks and Recreation Department. There are still many unanswered questions regarding the overall cost of the project, maintenance, maintenance costs, maintenance, safety, access, usage, connectivity, need and priority. There was also some speculation that photos of the SOM roundabout, gas station, the three crossovers and the Gates Mills Boulevard slash Cedar intersection were not included in the grant application to the ODNR, since they may have been detrimental to the approval of the grant. If this is true, then the grant was possibly approved under false pretenses. Has this question been asked? The proposal has gone through several iterations, some formalized, some undocumented, often contradictory, depending on who is asking a question and who is answering. The Mayfield Heights website still has the original application posted with all of the amenities. There are also revised renderings dated twelve two twenty-one with no amenities. After the January ten, twenty twenty-two city council meeting, it is even more questionable if there is a valid grant to vote on since no formal change requests have been submitted to the ODNR reflecting the downsizing of the project. If the grant is resubmitted with full, with full disclosures and eventually approved, we are down to just a trail with landscaping and drainage improvements. There is no guarantee, other than verbal, that the amenities the residents of Gates Mills Boulevard object to will not resurface in the future. Again, contradictory. This is one of the major concerns of Gates Mills Boulevard residents. The overall cost of the project to Mayfield Heights is unclear. The revised cost has been estimated at three hundred thousand dollars. How accurate is this number since material and labor costs have increased substantially? What is the real cost to Mayfield Heights? The Mayfield Heights website indicates a twenty-five percent match of non-fed funds. We learned at the January tenth council meeting that the grant was requested at a sixty-two point five percent versus thirty-seven point five percent match. Why the discrepancy between the published percentage and the requested percentage matches? The cost breakdown of the three hundred thousand is one hundred and seventeen thousand dollar grant, ninety-eight thousand dollars Mayfield Heights, eighty-four thousand dollars in-kind services from Mayfield Heights. This turns out to be a forty percent slash sixty percent match. Can anyone explain this? Has a maintenance budget been prepared? The grant application indicated that the park slash trail, now grounds trail, would be maintained on a daily basis, year-round? Two areas that have been grossly understated are safety and access, which tend to support the speculation that they were omitted from the grant application. The eighty-plus residential streets in Mayfield Heights are generally configured with two lanes of traffic, treelons, sidewalks, trees, landscape yards, no trash cans and no benches. Speed limits are twenty-five miles an hour, traffic generally on the lighter side, and still you see signs along these streets that read, "Slow, children at play and drive like your kids live on the street." There are currently two city parks. Oakville is bounded by residential streets. The community park is a little less secluded, has Marcel Road running through it, but both sides of the park are set back from the road by parking lots. The speed limit, twenty-five miles per hour. Access to both parks is via parking lots. This would indicate that Mayfield Heights City officials at least have some modicum of concern for the safety of residents in other parts of the city. This trail project is bordered by a busy, confusing intersection on the south end, two lanes of heavy traffic heading northbound, a side street, Kingswood, feeding into the Boulevard, a busy traffic circle with eleven entrance and egress points on the north end, two heavy traffic lanes heading southbound, two side streets, Longridge and Marshfield, which feed three additional side streets feeding directly into the Boulevard and three crossovers. Does this scream safe? Gates Mills Boulevard is a main route to Hillcrest for ambulances from multiple cities bordering Mayfield Heights and beyond. Heavy auto traffic, landscaping trucks, mail trucks, delivery trucks, funeral processions, et cetera. Gates Mills Boulevard residents have observed wrong-way drivers on Gates Mills Boulevard on many occasions. My house is on the southwest corner of Gates Mills Boulevard and Marshfield. In the almost fourteen years that I have lived there, three cars have landed in my yard after knocking over the street designation sign that was cemented in the ground. The posted speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. The actual speeds are anyone's guess, especially for the ambulances. The path itself will run very close to these borders in many places. A child left unattended by a distracted parent or even a few seconds could wander into roadway with a disastrous outcome. The safety that has been proposed is increased patrolling by the police department, crosswalks and flashing beacons of some sort. This is a safety, this is safety in such a high-traffic area? The study conducted by the Mayfield Heights Police Department indicates that there were only four motor vehicle accidents on Gates Mills Boulevard in twenty twenty-one. I have no doubt that this is true. With the installation of the trail slash path, the city is inviting residents and anyone else who chooses to use the path into the roadways, even at the crosswalks. Was this taken into consideration? Comparing the trail to the trails in Pepper Pike, Shaker, Beechwood and Orange Village is an invalid comparison. With the exception of Orange Village, all of the other trails are in non-light traffic areas. Orange Village is a well-planned grid covering practically the entire village. The study by the police department also fails to mention any effect the crosswalks at the north end of the trail will have on traffic in the roundabout. Contrary to what has been stated, the crosswalks at the traffic circle will cause vehicular backups and the possibility of increased accidents. Crosswalks with flashing beacons are proposed for Longridge and Marshfield, per the December first, twenty twenty-one letter. Great for the residents in the Longridge Marshfield development and the seven driveways on Gates Mills Boulevard that have direct access to a crosswalk. All other residents of Gates Mills Boulevard will either still be crossing in front of their homes with no flashing beacons or need to walk across multiple neighboring lawns to access a crosswalk. Jaywalking or trespassing, take your pick. Handicap access is even more limited. Crosswalk at Kingswood, sometimes in, sometimes out. Again, the trail would invite people into the roadways. This is dangerous. Connectivity. The proposed trail is a dead end on the south end. Cedar Road has no sidewalks east or west of Gates Mills Boulevard. It is very doubtful that Pepper Pike will install a trail in their portion of Gates Mills Boulevard, since they have just recently redone the median and created a bike path on the road. On the north end, it will connect to the existing sidewalk, not a trail, on SOM. The trail is virtually a trail to nowhere. If signage were to be considered on the trail, an appropriate sign at the north end would be no outlet. Usage, excuse me. The usage of the median, both currently and in the future, has been vastly overstated. There are many that claim they walk the median now. Where are they? Perhaps I don't see them because I live only three houses from Cedar and that's too far for them to walk. You see a few people walking dogs, but not to the magnitude of people who profess to walking the median. Other residents from the streets bordering Gates Mills Boulevard indicated they are bored with walking in the semi-circle of their development. How long before they become bored with walking in a circle? Others wanted to walk to dinner, shopping or the new pool. These all seem like they are just around the corner, but it is two miles from the south end of Gates Mills Boulevard or off Marshfield to a fine dining experience at Walmart, one of the gas stations or the cafeteria at Hillcrest, even further if you want real food. The pool will almost, the pool will almost be two point five miles away. Other than the first time, how often do you think these walks will occur? Amazon, Uber Eats, Grubhub, grocery delivery services, restaurant deliveries, pizza deliveries, curbside pickup, drop-off lanes at schools, car lanes at fast food places will spill onto SOM Center, Mayfield Road or wrap around the building at Golden Gate. Welcome to life in the suburbs. Adding a trail down Gates Mills Boulevard is going to change all of this. Can you remember the last time you walked from your home to a restaurant, a store or a park? Conversely, what would entice anyone living north of SOM, I'm sorry, living north of the SOM roundabout, where there are miles and miles of sidewalks connecting the whole city to venture another three-quarters of a mile down Gates Mills Boulevard, only to turn around and go back to see trees? Ironically, in the January ten committee of the whole meeting, the reduction of the number of parking spaces at the new pool slash community center project was a concern. Has space been allocated for parking the apparently hundreds, possibly two hundred and forty-one bicycles, strollers and wagons that will be at the complex each day in the summer, once the residents south of SOM roundabout are released from captivity? Living on Gates Mills Boulevard is a lifestyle choice. Six homes on Gates Mills Boulevard changed ownership in twenty twenty-one. Average time from listing to closing was six weeks and sell prices were at or near asking price. There obviously is no problem attracting new residents. I think Councilwoman Tressi summed it up quite nicely.
Is that you?
I guess that's me. I don't know. I didn't write it. I did not write it. Here's what Councilwoman Tressi said. "I think it has nothing to do with young or old," Tressi said. "I think if you moved, moved to one of the streets like Longridge, Marshfield, Hansford, roads in the vicinity, vicinity of Gates Mills Boulevard, you moved there because you said, 'Honey, I love this house.'" Now that we're discussing Gates Mills Boulevard, we're saying, "Well, I have no place to walk." But the day you said, "Honey, I love this house," you knew there was no place to walk other than your housing development. Everyone who has presented their views at the various meetings or provided written comments, both pro and con, to city council members have valid comments. What is the downside of the trail project not being implemented to non-Gates Mills residents and other pro-trailers? Trailers? Nada. Worst-case scenario, muddy shoes. Life will go on as usual. What are the downsides to Gates Mills Boulevard residents if the trail is implemented? Immeasurable. Property values, future amenities, increased traffic, reduced safety, maintenance, trash, parking on side streets, et cetera, et cetera. Before you cast your vote, take a moment and substitute the name of your street for Gates Mills Boulevard. Would you suddenly like a host of strangers, maybe two hundred and forty-one, walking down your street? You might even get lucky enough to experience having trash cans, benches and pet litter stations installed, just later if needed. I doubt anyone would ask you if you wanted them. They would just appear one day. Several of the council members have already indicated that they will be voting no. Thank you. This should be a seven to zero no vote against approving the engineering costs and allowing the project to move forward, followed by a motion to withdraw the grant application. This project is not needed and should be put to rest. Concentrate on the community center, pool, park and get them done right. If there is a drainage problem on Gates Mills Boulevard median, use the funds allocated for the trail to fix that problem. Don't create a new one. And then there's, um, like two columns. For the trail, comments from Gates Mills residents. Medium is unwalkable, poor drainage, uneven, a chance to meet neighbors, will provide another place to walk. Against the trail, it's, um, the median, poor drainage, questionable survey results, no prior input from Gates Mills residents and project is poorly handled. For the trail, likes the idea of having a park across the street from their house, walks their dog two to three times a day, feels sorry for mother who runs down Gates Mills Boulevard with a stroller, could walk to dinner in the summer months. Questionable usage data. And against the trail, project cost for implementation, maintenance, no connectivity, a path to nowhere, too many unanswered, poorly answered questions, no guarantee amenities won't resurface in the future. Questionable usage data. High-traffic road, ambulance, traffic, speeding cars, safety issues at the circle and on the path, fear of unattended children on the path. Access to the path, crosswalks, handicap access, parking- Access to the path, crosswalks, handicap access, parking, added traffic on Long, Longridge and Marshfield. Maintenance of the pass, path, I'm sorry, trash, snow, animal droppings. Gates Mills Boulevard is lifestyle choice, likes seclusion. Serious bikers will not use the path. Comparison to trails in Orange and Pepper Pike. Comments from Marshfield and Longridge, et cetera, and Kingswood residents. For the trail, difficult to walk on the median and needed to retain young families. And against the trail, dangerous, high tri, high-heavy traffic on Gates Mills Boulevard, parking added traffic on Longridge and Marshfield, beautiful as it is, likes seclusion of the area. It, uh, leads to nowhere. Plans keep changing, precedent for more to come. Traffic circle already confusing and dangerous. Use metro parks, fix roads first. Comments from SOM and Hansford and Cedar residents. For the trail, it feels disconnected from the community. Will increase property values of Gates Mills Boulevard homes, will attract new residents, limited walking area in development and can walk to parks, et cetera. Comments from Mayfield Heights residents outside the target area. For the trail, it's a new place to walk. Um, we've applied for the grant. Connectivity to parks, et cetera, for Gates Mills, et cetera, residents. Open spaces, good for health, would provide safe and equitable transportation. Wants to connect to Pepper Pike, Beechwood and Shaker. And for against the trail, proposal not well-conceived, no integrity, lack of information, too ma-